7:30-ish. All right, good evening and welcome to the Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting for August 20th. I have completed my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seats.
Well, we're trying to confuse.
Oh, it's, we're off to a good start tonight. All right, so, August 20th, Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. We're going to forego acceptance of the minutes till the next board meeting when we have a full board. First item on the agenda. Hartman, 14 Blueberry, review and discuss ARB and Ridge Preservation for demolition and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling. Said property is located at 14 Blueberry Lane in Highland Mills and is known as a Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 217, Block 2, Lot 2. Anybody here from Larry Hartman's office? Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. It works?
No, it did. Try again. Is the green light on?
Hi, good evening. My name is CD Carpenter of Hartman Design. This project was before last month. At that time, the board authorized council to prepare a draft resolution. We didn't submit any new materials.
Did you speak a little?
We didn't submit any new materials, and I believe we have just one remaining comment. We should revise the plans to uphold downstairs leading to the attic instead of regular stairs. And hope we can get this project approved tonight.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Natalie, you think you had a short one on this, right?
I did, but the applicant summarized our remaining comment on this application already, and Kelly's prepared a draft resolution for you to consider and incorporated all of our comments thus far, so, you know, if the board's ready, then I think that's all that's outstanding.
Okay. Kelly? Okay. So, council circulated a draft resolution approval to the board. I will, if it pleases the board, we'll act on that. Okay. The applicant has provided proof that the property is located outside the consolidated water area and is served by a private well for uses portable water to the building department, building department, water department, and village engineer. See Local Law 9 of 2024, Exception Number 14. Specific conditions: No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction. Construction of such structures inconsistent with the architectural renderings submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy issued for structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviations from such renderings will require further planning board review. All new windows shall be constructed of or coated with non-reflective material or anti-reflective window film will be applied to any new low-e windows installed. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated August 6, 2025, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. No fence is being approved as part of this application. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall perform testing on the septic system witnessed by the building department and submitted necessary information supporting the design of the septic system to the satisfaction of the building inspector. Information submitted to the building department should include a plan showing wells on adjacent properties for confirmation the proposed septic system does not encroach on required separation distances. Prior to the issuance of a CO, the applicant shall remove all non-conforming sheds from the property. As presented by the applicant, the basement and attic spaces to remain unfinished and is not habitable, such that it lacks finishing and has exposed beams, pipes, and concrete walls, and floors of similar treatments as determined accepted by the building inspector. Plumbing roughens are not permitted except for mechanical plumbing equipment such as water heater or any otherwise determined by the building inspector to be approved for unfinished, appropriate for any unfinished space. This approval is additionally conditioned upon the applicant delivering prior to the issuance of a building permit, proof that a copy of the final approved plans has been filed with the Orange County Department of Public Works, or proof that such filing is not required. I'll offer a motion to accept the draft resolution as read. Any questions? All in favor? Next item, One Pheasant Run ARB. Review decision for ARB and Ridge Preservation for, in addition to a single-family dwelling. Said property is located at One Pheasant Run in Highland Mills and is known as a Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 21247, Block 1, Lot 7. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Just state who you are again and...
I'm the owner. My name is Pankas Kellner.
And you're here for ARB for...
For One Pheasant Run.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have questions for the applicant?
No.
Natalie?
Yeah, so, at the last appearance, there were some questions about whether or not the property was subject to regulations under the Water Quality Protection Overlay. The applicant added those buffer areas to their plan and basically demonstrates that there is no encroachment on those areas, so that's fine. Your building inspector has confirmed that the lot area and lot width are legally pre-existing non-conforming conditions permitted to remain. There are some minor inconsistencies in plan revisions that will be required, you know, for the plan prior to plan signing, but we believe that those, again, are minor so that we can work with the applicant on those issues. And otherwise, council has incorporated our suggested resolution conditions in the draft that she's provided to you. And lastly, our notes indicate that the board has not made a finding on visibility from the view corridor, and the applicant has provided information for you to consider this evening to make a finding on that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Questions for Natalie?
No.
No? All right. View corridor, Ridge Pres. We left this, that everybody was gonna go take a ride, take a look. The applicant has also provided additional information on that. Thoughts on viewability from the view corridor?
I don't think it's seen.
I don't think it is.
No, you're not gonna see it.
All right, so, I'll offer a motion to waive the requirements of Ridge Pres. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. WQP, we need to waive the... No, because it's not in, right?
No, yep. You're all set.
Okay. That's it, right, Kelly? We can go to 239 Advisory. All right. Hold on, let me just get the... Sorry, my computer's being slow this evening. We have a resolution, just give me a second.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
It's matriculating through the internet. Why does it not want to load? There we go. All right, again, council has circulated a draft resolution of approval for this board to take action on tonight. This application is exempt from the moratorium created by Local Law 9 of 2024, moratorium, as the applicant has provided proof the property is located outside of the consolidated water area and is served by a private water company for use as, for use as portable water to the building department, water department, and village engineer. See Local Law 9 of 2024, Exemption 14. Specific conditions: No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural renderings submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval, nor any, nor shall any CO issue for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviations from such renderings will require further planning board review. The color of the addition and trim shall match the existing home and be consistent from the front of the house to the rear of the new addition. All new windows shall be constructed of or coated with non-reflective material anti-reflection window film will be applied to any new low-e windows installed. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated August 14, 2025, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. As presented by the applicant, the basement is to remain unfinished and is not habitable, such that it lacks finishing, that has exposed beams, pipes, and concrete walls, and floors, or similar treatments as determined acceptable by the building inspector. Plumbing roughens are not permitted except for mechanical and plumbing equipment such as water heaters or otherwise determined by the building inspector to be appropriate for an unfinished space. This approval is additionally conditioned upon the applicant delivering prior to the issuance of any building permit, proof that a copy of final approved plans has been filed the Orange County Department of Public Works, or proof that no such filing is required. I'll offer a motion to accept the draft resolution of approval as read. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Cooking with gas tonight. Next item on the agenda, Ridge Road, three-lot subdivision. This is a public hearing for proposed subdivision site plan ARB and Ridge Preservation for a three-lot subdivision. Said property is located at 345 Ridge Road, is known as a Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 204, Block 1, Lot 14 dot 2. Good evening, sir. If my computer cooperates, I'll pull up your plans.
I know, he's pretty quick with the easel, so there may be a turn. Therese, Therese! Feel fresh here. And he's ready.
He's ready, that's okay. It's 'cause I have two folders for 345 Ridge Road.
I remember when I used to do that. He'd look it up in book and I'd pull it up on myself. It's even faster.
Except his easel blocks Jeff's entire camera.
Right.
All right. All right, sir, go ahead if you wanna start who you are and what we're here for tonight. That's better. He's got it on the screens too, yeah? No, he's got it on the TV screens for you. You may have to pick up the microphone. Do you take it out of the... There you go.
My name is Pedro Santos, we're going to have a public hearing. I'm here for a public hearing for the three-lot subdivision for 345 Ridge Road. The project is about three-lot subdivision. It's located in our two-day stone district. Subject will create, create obstacles from having direct access from the rear. The project proposes some type of septic and water wells. Subject feels should be, should be further limits, which limits area of water for certain subjects. And that's the whole. Public hearing. I'm not sure if we're going to have a public hearing.
Yeah, we'll go to the public here in a few minutes. First, we will go to our consultants, or the board. Questions for us for the board? No? Natalie?
Sure. So, the board knows that this application has been before use several times. The applicant continues to advance their plans to address comments from H2M and the board. There are some outstanding requests and more threshold considerations that need to be addressed in a future submission. You know, the first has to do with the wetlands. Your wetlands consultant has provided a memo. I assume the applicant received that, so those comments will need to be addressed. In response to our comments on the wetlands, the applicant indicated that they may potentially shift the location of Lot 1, the location of the home on Lot 1, so that it does not encroach within the 100-foot buffer of the wetlands. So, you know, that could have some impacts, obviously, on where the septic system and the well is located, as well as the limits of disturbance, so that's something that needs to be addressed on a future revision. Also, since the last appearance, you've received comments from the county DPW. They've requested a right-of-way dedication along the frontage of the property, so that impacts the subdivision as it's delineated for you, you know, the meets and bounds and things like that, so that will also need to be shown on a future plan submission. There was some additional perk testing done to confirm the septic system designs would work, but the results have not been shown on the plan, so we're still waiting that information, waiting on that information. Then, the only other thing that I kinda wanted to raise for the board is, on prior submissions, the applicant showed a natural wooded buffer being preserved between the homes towards the front, so that's Lot 1 and Lot 3, and the home in the back, Lot 2. And then on this plan submission, they've extended the limits of clearing, but indicated that within the limits of clearing, the trees that are greater than 12-inch diameter at breast height would be preserved. But again, that does encroach on that natural wooded buffer that they previously said would be maintained, so that's something that I think either needs to be clarified on a future plan set, or if the board wanted to weigh in on that for the applicant, you can provide some direction at this time. We do have other comments, you know, we got the first draft of the SWIP, we've provided our comments on that. But I think, you know, for the purposes of tonight, those are the threshold things that need to be addressed.
Questions for Natalie? CJ?
Are we proposing any sort of tree inventory for the new clearing?
Yes, they have provided a tree survey. At this time, I don't remember if you're doing a one-to-one, I don't think it is a one-to-one replacement, right? Let me see. I have that, please.
No, I thought the other applicant was a one-for-one. No, wait, I thought this was a one-for-one.
What I will say, while Natalie looks, sir, is the preservation of that buffer between Ridge Road and the property, that was, it came up when we started doing the initial ARB review, that that buffer was going to be essential for the ARB approval or the ARB review of this property. So if your applicant's looking to make changes or thin that area out, it could affect the ARB review down the road as well. So, if we're not doing a one-for-one replacement, either we're gonna wanna do a one-for-one replacement, or think about not doing the clearing, or going back to the original limits of disturbance for the property that was proposed.
Okay. We'll do it over again. We'll get that comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir.
We'll verify that information on the desk.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
And I did, so it is, they're removing 117 trees greater than 12 inches diameter, and they're replacing 117 trees, so anything below that, they're not proposing to replace.
Any other...
The public hearing will be open shortly.
Public hearing's not open yet, ma'am. Any other questions for the applicant?
No, I'm just confused. If they're gonna move, if they're thinking about moving Lot 3, how are they gonna maintain the proper setbacks? They look very close.
Sorry, I missed that, Chris.
If they move the house on Lot 3, are they gonna be able to maintain the proper setbacks? I mean, they're real close as it is.
Yeah, they are really close, and I think it's, Lot 1 is the one that they're gonna shift. So, on another plan, it shows the 100-foot buffer to the wetlands, Chris. Let me see if I can point you to that.
I thought it was the top one, but the top one looks like the driveway's in the buffer.
That one, the home is not...
The driveway?
The driveway is...
Yes, the driveway is, and you spoke to the applicant previously about encroaching on the WQPO buffer, so they've provided those permeable pavers that were requested. But Lot 1, there is a dashed line here. Mr. DeSantos, do you wanna point to it on the screen for the board?
It's the screen, please.
The 100-foot buffer for the wetlands.
It should be this one right here, right?
Oh, I forgot that it's right here. Actually, it's not. It's, it crosses the home, Chris. You see where it's like, yes, that's it.
This one here, the dot, the dash? Okay.
Yeah, that's the 100-foot buffer. So you see how the home is located within that area, some of the hardscaping. Well, and so, with the 100-foot buffer under the freshwater wetlands law, this is, you know, under a local jurisdiction for this part of the, for this purpose right now. The applicant is still before, they need to seek a jurisdictional determination from the DEC and Army Corps, so they may have some additional comments. But for right now, the proposed mitigation, I believe, is for direct disturbance to the wetlands themselves where the driveways are crossing, and I think that they have now proposed greater than a one-to-one disturbance of that area, but not including the 100-foot buffer, if that makes sense. I may have just confused everybody.
Property's just getting narrower and narrower, it's gonna be tough.
Towards the back, yeah.
Do you have a way to redesign the house to be less wide, more skinny?
I don't know, it's, once you, once you start moving it back, you're gonna have problems with the septic and the pool and everything too, because everything's gonna start to...
Crunch in.
Crunch in in the back.
I was thinking Evan could take the house and instead of making it like this wide, just kinda like make it a cool design and...
Make it an oval. I mean, really, it's gonna be incumbent upon you to make it work and come out of that, come out of that boundary. So, we'll wait for another plan set to come back on that one. We wanna talk about this, that anymore? Or... Okay, I'm gonna ask that you just take a seat for a few minutes, sir, while we go out to the public. All right, so we're gonna...
Leave the mic.
Oh, okay. I didn't miss anything.
You can leave the mic, leave it.
You gotta leave the mic so the public can take it. All right, so, we're gonna go out to the public now for 345 Ridge Road. We're gonna ask that you please come to the podium. You gotta state your name and where you're from. We ask that you be respectful, you lend me your comments to about three or four minutes, and you direct all your questions to the board. The board will, and if they can, do their best to answer your questions. Just keep in mind that this is a feedback session where we're here to take input from the public on this project. We're not actually obligated to give answers or responses this night or at this time, so I just wanna let everybody know about that going forward. So with that said, anybody in the first row wish to speak on this application? Second row wishing to speak on, come up to the mic and state your name, please.
My name is Beth Lawrence, and I'm president of None of Park, which is the parcel just next to the parcel, that year. And I was just hoping that you could acquire a buffer between our community and the house, the first house.
Well, right now, they're not proposing to clear, the limits of disturbance are marked. It's hard to see on this map. Trying to think. So they're not gonna clear anything out directly along the property line. Whatever trees or woodding is there is going to be left to the, left as much as possible. They're not, they're not proposing to clear cut the entire property out. They're just making room for the house itself. Anybody else in the second row? Third row? Fourth row? Fifth row? Anybody at all? Going once? Going twice? Third time? All right, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing.
One second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, if you could please come back up. You have anyone?
Just that...
Oh! Easel down!
Just that at this point, the applicant obviously has some changes to make for you and needs a moratorium waiver, so it would be the applicant that if they do wanna move forward, maybe make those changes, maybe apply to the board of trustees. If you'd like, you could authorize a resolution, but there would be a lot that would have to be revised.
I don't think we're at a point for a resolution. Nope, no. So, I don't know, did you hear what Attorney Norton said? So this project is subject to the water moratorium that's currently in place, so you're going to have to make an application to the village board to see if you can be granted an exemption to that moratorium. So, you know, it's, I would start that process sooner than later, 'cause that's gonna take you a few months to get through that process, and, you know, right now, we're waiting on revisions to come in on the plan before we can make a determination or authorize council for a resolution on this, so we're gonna just wait for you to, you know, respond to H2M memos, the feedback tonight, and then go from there, sir.
Nope, well, one additional thing, so if it was just waiting on the moratorium, that stays the timeframe within which this board has to make a decision on the application, which is 62 days, if you're also waiting on them to submit revised plans, then that's on them, so if they are gonna take longer than 62 days to do that as well, then at some point, I would say within the next 60 days, the applicant should consider writing a letter to this board, waiting that timeframe for this board to make a decision while you're preparing those plans and obtaining that waiver.
Okay.
If John has any questions, he can always reach out to the building firm.
Thank you, sir. 184 Dundenberg LLC, public hearing for ARB and Ridge Preservation for the construction of a single-family dwelling. Said property is located at 184 Dundenberg Road in Central Valley and is known as a Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225, Lot 1, Lot 7, Dot 1. Good evening again, sir.
I have a question about the property. I'm looking for more for the landscape. I have to provide landscape. I'm also, I think, some house topic of the, 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 the right for this list.
Okay, so this is, at the board's request, the additional screening that we asked you to install. I don't know, if the board remembers the last time they were here, there was concern about the visibility, so we did ask them to install additional plantings, which it looks like the applicant has taken care of for us. Natalie?
Yes, so in addition to the landscaping plan that was provided, you had also asked for a superimposed photo of the home in its setting. They've provided an aerial photograph, which shows the home, hardscape areas, which actually don't reflect exactly what's in the site plan, so we've asked them to add a note qualifying that, but showing essentially the vegetation that would remain and be planted, you know, post-development for you to consider. With respect to the landscaping, the applicant proposes 16 trees to offset the 34 trees that are to be removed. The trees are located along the frontage of the property, which you just observed. We recommend you consider that to your satisfaction. Previously, the applicant advised that all easements were provided to council for review as well as prescribed rights of way. We haven't seen that. I defer to Kelly if she has any comments, and also, I think that it's been raised before that the driveway for the property in the rear crosses this property, so it's not clear if an easement has been provided for that neighboring access, or if the applicant intends to provide that. That's, we just have one minor plan revision as far as the limits of disturbance should include the trees that are going to be removed, and then if there are trees that will be preserved within those, then they should be clearly indicated.
Questions for Natalie?
None, this one.
Okay. And I think it's important to note that some of the trees, I know it's not a one-for-one replacement, but some of the trees that are being removed are, if you'll go up there and look, are like, I wouldn't call them like trees, they're kind of scrub, big weeds, so...
Absolutely.
I think the, the plantings that the applicant is doing, is willing to put in or going to put in is definitely gonna help at this site.
I agree.
Any other questions for the applicant before we go to the public? I just ask that you take a seat, please, sir? All right, so, now we're gonna open the public hearing for 184 Dundenberg. Anybody that wishes to speak on 184 Dundenberg, same rules that apply for the other application. I ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and state your comments. First row? Second row? Third row? Fourth row? I was really excited. We don't normally have people at our meeting, and we saw a bunch of people at our meeting, and we were gonna have a lot more comments. Fifth row? Anybody in the room? All right, first, sec, first call, second call, and final call. Offer a motion to close the public hearing.
One second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How do we feel about having, I know there's a few things, but I think we can have council draft a resolution, right?
Unless I get to it beforehand.
Or our new council.
It'll be big.
Are you okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. So is the board okay with having?
I'm okay with that.
All right, so I'll, I'll offer a motion to authorize council to draft a resolution of approval for this project.
One second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now the public has to come. They said now the public.
Now the, we're gonna have it. So... Sir?
Sir?
Sir? You have anything else for the board?
Just regarding the exit, the existing, the, 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 or something, so that the council can view with the less, it's mentioned.
Yes.
You have it? You do have it, okay. Okay, cool. One condition we're gonna ask that gets incorporated into, and I know it's silly, but the street superintendent asked me to do it. The street sign is green, it's a private road, it needs to be changed to blue. I know it's a very silly thing, but he asked me, that you're in front of us, if you guys could get the street sign changed to the right color for us. Thank you. All right, that's it. Thank you. Extra space storage. Review and discuss materials submitted for signage at an existing store unit business. Said property is located at 97 Mayor Lane in Harriman and is known as a Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225, Block 1, Lot 40. Good evening.
I'm here to tell where, where the size is, and I am here because extra space storage, acquired light storage, so we have to replace existing signs.
And I am here because extra space storage, acquired right storage, so we have to replace existing signs.
Sorry, I'm pulling them up. Does the board have questions for the applicant before we go? Natalie?
Sure. This is the applicant's first appearance before you. They propose modifications to five existing signs on the property for purposes of rebranding, as well as other upgrades. There are several nonconformities associated with the existing signs, which should be confirmed legally pre-existing nonconforming with the building inspector. So we recommend that you authorize that referral. If they are not permitted to remain after discussion and consultation with the building inspector, then there may need to be a variance or an appearance before the ZBA. For example, some of the nonconformities include, there are two existing freestanding signs constructed at the Mayor Lane entrance, where only one is permitted on the property. Additionally, there are two wall signs present on the property where only one is permitted. We've noted that the office sign upgrade may be exempt from planning board review, but we recommend that you confirm the same with the building inspector. The applicant should confirm the size of the wall signs are less than or equal to 10% of the total wall area by providing calculations on the plan. There's some other minor things that we've requested be added to the plan, including notes that the signs do not project more than 12 inches from the building facade. Confirmation of the height of the pylon sign. Setbacks from the right-of-way on Mayor Lane for each of the freestanding signs need to be a certain limit by code. The location of the monument sign should be confirmed not in an area that would impede pedestrian mobility or vehicular visibility. And finally, the plan should clearly indicate which signs are to be illuminated, and otherwise, we defer to counsel on secret and public hearing recommendations.
Questions for Natalie?
Is it a type-two action and the public hearing is within your discretion?
Do you think we should hold off on the determination from the building inspector because they may have to go to ZBA?
It may have to go to the ZBA. If it goes to the ZBA, a public hearing is required.
Right, so I think probably hold off until we hear.
You can take your secret action.
Okay, alright, so I'll offer, I'll offer a motion to type, this is a type-two under secret.
One second.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorize a referral to the building inspector to determine pre-existing nonconforming? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll also issue, in case they needed, offer a motion for a referral to the ZBA for any and all relief that they may require based on the building inspector's determination. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, Natalie will type up a referral. It usually takes a couple of days, we'll hear back from the building inspector. If he determines you need relief, then you have your referral to the ZBA, then we'll see you back. We'll see you back either way, either when you come back from the ZBA or when you, we hear back from the building inspector. Alright? Thank you. No, don't, don't.
Oh, I don't want to jinx it.
That's bad juju right there.
I'm sorry. Take it back, take it back.
It's usually me.
Shops at Woodbury, Building 9, review and discuss materials for an amendment to the site plan for Building 9 at the Shops of Woodbury. Said property is located at Los Cee Lane in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225 Block 1 Lot 34 Dot 222. Long time no see.
Yeah, it's been a couple of months.
Did you get a haircut? Did you get a lollipop with that haircut?
Yeah.
Okay. I had to know.
We didn't even hand you right up, try to get your chopstick, thank you. You may recall over here about a million times before, but the last time was back in February, March. We had a basic amendment, we had plans updated and adopted. As part of that, we had also fixed cleanup on the site plan because the project is in construction and operational now. As part of those cleanup items, there were a few changes we were looking at based on the loading code requirements that had changed since the property individual approved, which therefore changed the parking numbers and some landscape improvement stuff. So Kevin will walk you through those individual items tonight. So we talked about the now, I believe, and then you have some before. You did go through the now, is no problem, thank you. Kevin will walk you through those too, no issues. We can update the plans and address those, those items. I was almost going to try to say the word that I can't say now, so let you say it. Okay, this is involving order pro share.
That's pretty good.
But that and mainly it's loading and parking adjustments as well. I like Kevin walking through that.
Thank you.
Do you think Kevin, I have a question for the applicant. I'm happy to go through the whole list if you'd like. Do it real quickly by saying what we need to do. I have everything you need to remember, or if you would need to add to that, you can say it. Would you like me to walk through that?
No. No. No, 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 no. Questions for the applicant? Reader's digest version.
Well, you know, again, I think the applicant can comply with all of our comments. They're going to shift the generator, there is a net increase in parking of two spaces, so that decreases the prior waiver that you authorized by 1%. There's really no action for the board there. They're going to modify some landscaping islands. There's not much, so. Yep, oh, and, but the crux of this is that they are eliminating the loading docks for the hotel, and the board will need to make a finding that you agree to that waiver. They've provided some information on how the loading will occur for the hotel. One of the things, it has to do with the timing of when those loadings will occur. And they've suggested between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM is when loadings, the loading, the trucks will arrive to the site and do what they need to do. Otherwise, I believe counsel has authorized a resolution for you to consider, so.
Kevin, do you just, do you just mind walking through just the loading, just for the identification, everybody? Because we've all lived the application for the last seven years, but.
So the way that it operates is the loading happens during, during the peak part of the day, because that's when folks have checked out. This is not a destination hotel, this is where the travelers, so check-in occurs back for three years. And then they have to out by one, and so their lease activity in the parking areas for the hotel is going to be there. So the signage will indicate that, and they'll use the area of the curb line to be back at the hotel for that stage. They don't anticipate there to be parking back there at all, anyway, whether it's for the parking.
And I think it's just for the, for the public to know, it's important to note that, you know, when everybody thinks of a hotel, they think of ballrooms and conference centers and stuff like that. This hotel has none of that. This is just, you know, a business center, some, you know, grab-and-go snacks and just some rooms to stay in. So it's not like they're going to be loading in shows and anything, stuff like that, so. We've, the, I don't, I think the board agrees that the need for a full loading berth at a hotel like this is not necessary. No. We're good, the board's good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Just so happens, we have a draft resolution.
We tried to type out, and I fixed it. In the first paragraph, it was noticed by the applicant, to my horror and shame, but I fixed it. I said that this was also a special permit amendment, and it is not, it is only safe.
She does it to keep it on your toes.
Make sure they read it, you know?
I tell her all the time, put passages from like Moby Dick in the middle of it, just to see if anybody's actually.
No, but last time I can show Andy Saxon it, and then I caught it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you know.
Alright, so the board's okay with the, going through the, okay.
Yes.
Alright, so. On August 20, 2025, the planning board reaffirmed the secret consistency finding for the third amended site plan application.
Page before that, really?
Oh, the water.
Public hearing.
Yes, sorry, sorry. A public hearing on this application was waived by the planning board in accordance with the village code on August 2025. Sorry. And you put it in bold and everything for me too, and I missed it. The application is exempt from the current moratorium as the project completed the secret process prior to the effective date of the moratorium, exemption number five. And then we get to our favorite, specific conditions. All applicable conditions attached to the resolution of approval and with conditions dated April 21, 2021. The amended resolution of approval with conditions dated April 19, 2023. And a second amended resolution of approval with conditions dated February 19, 202020. 2025 for the Shops of Woodbury LLC are hereby incorporated into this resolution and are to remain in full force and effect. And this approval is subject to and conditioned upon satisfaction of those conditions as if they were set forth at length hearing. To the extent that there is any inconsistency between such applicable conditions and conditions set forth in this third amended resolution of approval with conditions, the conditions of this resolution control unless the context dictates otherwise.
Paid by the word. Just kidding.
Prior to the signing of the plans by the chairman, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated August 7, 202025 to the satisfaction of the village engineer. All deliverables for the hotel Building 9 shall occur at the rear of the hotel during off-hours. Timeframe should be discussed, oh, we did, sorry.
9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Sorry, I totally just read the teleprompter.
Well, it's good that that's, now it's going to be during off-hours, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Yes. And cause no nuisance to other businesses with the commercial center. Delivery vehicles shall only be parked along the curb line long enough to unload the vehicle. No idling or parking overnight is permitted. The location of Building 9 generator shall be shifted away from the existing sewer main to provide clearance for future excavation and maintenance of the sewer utility. I'll offer a motion to accept the draft resolution of approval as amended this evening.
One second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
I just have one more thing. I just wanted to say goodbye to you. And I know you would probably say something to the other people who have been gone and work last on the agenda, but I've been here for a long time, working with this board, this community, and the entire town I've been here, Kelly's been here. Even when Britt was here years ago, and it's always been an absolute pleasure working with Kelly and this community and company. I just wanted to say first things, it's been a real pleasure. Don't get me wrong, you know, we're excited to work with you now. I did want to acknowledge that, because Kelly's always managed whether she agreed or disagreed with, or had to take our permission against something we were advocating for. Kelly always gave her respect, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Heard that.
Kelly promised, maybe promised that I would not make her the center of attention tonight. And I'm living to, and I'm living to those words.
I didn't make any promises.
I know you, nobody else did, I just did. Woodbury Commons Phase 5, continue review of secret and draft findings statement associated with proposed expansion of Woodbury Common, including construction of a hotel, development of a second parking garage, infill, and construction of 159,249 square feet of additional retail spaces. The property contains 149.2 plus or minus acres and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 225 Block 1 Lot 70 Dot 2 and Section 226 Block 1 Lot 1. The properties are located within the limited commercial industrial business, light industrial, and hotel overlay districts. I don't see Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer can't come, but she said Simon would be here.
I don't see Simon either.
Well.
Shall we move it to the end and just keep going? In case they show up?
Move it to the end, and if they're not here, I'll explain the technical project.
Okay. Number eight, 4 Corporate Drive. Review and discuss materials submitted for an amended site plan at ARB for an office building. Said property is located at 4 Corporate Drive in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 226 Block 1 Lot 88.
I just talked to Steve, so.
Oh. Sorry. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Fisher, it's on with the bus. I'm actually, you know, the applicant, but I would like to ask the board to push this further down on the list. If Joe shows up, we're going to break it close in time.
Perfectly fine. Rihanna Park, 38 Jacob Pilt. Review and discuss materials submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation for in addition to an existing seasonal dwelling. Said property is located at 38 Jacob Pilt Lane in Rihanna Park in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 204 Block 1 Lot 12. Anybody here for Rihanna Park 38? Oh, sorry.
I just happened to be here for the other one, which is not pregnant, so. So my name is Beth Lawrence, I'm the president of Dunham Park. The architect of records is not, I'm an architect, but I'm not the architect of records. So, and this is.
My name is Sandy Luma, I'm a contractor, I've been in the project.
And I've been to more, and I've been to more houses. So, we went through the, this is the first time I'm coming.
Yes.
And we went through the list. One thing is that the square footage is not correct. I think that they thought that the addition was a two-story addition, and so one-story addition. So the numbers are 484 to the addition.
Okay.
484 as opposed to 918. So therefore, it's not increasing, it's not more than doubling that.
But it is doubling. Oh, what's the existing square footage of them?
The district is 822.
Okay. So approximately 50% increase, okay.
Okay, so that was that. I'm not sure why all of the, the, not, elegant, that is.
Yeah, I don't know, the, did you submit digitally, or did you put paper and they scanned them in? Any chance you can do digital for the next?
Yeah, yeah, we have it all, we have it all digital.
Yeah, digital will be, we're trying to do away with the whole, with the whole paper thing, so digital will be great.
I can have prints and, and they can see them, I mean, I don't know.
See if we can get through, hold on. Yeah, before we go to the board, anything other comments you want to make in your applicant? I don't want to cut you off mid.
Yeah, 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 okay. Dunham Park. Dunham Park is a seasonal, seasonal community. It has 39, 42, it has 42 buildings on it. It is non-compliant, but I'm not sure what makes it non-compliant. I'm not sure if it's the square footage of the, her house, or is it an individual house? In the past, it was built in 1937, more of a bubble colony, and they, it was very small. Every, every house had a restriction, two little bedrooms, one living room, dining room, kitchen. That's a one-story, not a two-story. So some of that, the houses are very small. Over the years, they've been handed on. And in the past, they have not required us to go to the board for review. It's gone to the building department, the building department has done all inspections. Everything is done according to the books, however, we have not been asked to, because you can't comply with the current zoning and building, not building, the current zoning. And so, and we, so with Mr. Thomasberger, his side sign, and the four houses there, and we've not come to the planning board. And the same thing, you just have, if you're only allowed to make a 10% increase to the house, then you have an 800 square foot house, which is 13. And you can only add 800 feet. There aren't that many houses that have not been handed on to. None of these houses can be seen from the road. Our neighbors can't see any of the finishes. We review internally so that it is, so that the people who are adjacent are, for war. Their materials are such that they can live in the community. So we do have our own recommendations for the house. So I noted on the, at the end of the comments, that it might be possible to waive. And I was hoping that we could waive, given by the board, because I don't have it.
Being, I, first question I have for you, is this being converted to a season, a year-round dwelling?
Well, it is to enable it to reuse out of the summer season, but I have no intention of living there full-time. But I would like to be able to use it more than from May to October.
Okay. Alright, so that would have to go to the ZBA right off the bat then, right?
Right, well, it's, so it's, what makes it non-conforming is that this is, seasonal dwellings are no longer permitted in the village. So that makes it legally pre-existing, but non-conforming. I can't speak to what Gary Thomasberger used to do, but what the code says now, that's in place now, is that you're only permitted to expand these non-conforming uses by 10%, which, like you said, is, you know, and that's usually probably the size of this table, you know? It is very small. So the ZBA is familiar with this type of application, not specifically to this grouping of seasonal dwellings, but there's others that are legally pre-existing in the village as well, that they review. And there's a special permit that they can issue for exceeding 10% after you appear before them and now consider it. This board has no authority to authorize not having a review. It's something that's legally required under the code, and this board has to follow the code. What this board will likely do tonight, I can't say they will because they haven't done it yet, is to refer you to the Z B A so that you then go there and you request a variance for whatever the square footage is that you want, which sounds, you said it was four eighty-four? Or four eighty-eight?
Four, yeah, four, four eighty-four.
Four eighty-four.
It's on the plans, so it was...
I see them there, they're actually right here, but I just keep looking right over there instead of right in front of me. So they would send you to the Z B A, and the Z B A would review that under the requirements that are in the code as to whether or not they would grant that. At that point, then you would come back here for this board to consider it. So I think that would be the next step that we might advise for the boards, the next step to authorize...
Is the Z B A referral?
Now, one thing that we've always done is any addition applies with the state management. So even if the, the initial house was a seasonal house, the new house has all the insulation, the heat, you know, everything is required.
So that's a building code, which is a different code than what this board follows. That would be in the purview of the building inspector. So when he does those inspections that you talked about, he would have to look and... He's shaking his head, so he knows what I'm talking about. Your architect would be aware of that as well and to what those requirements are. And he would be, when he does his inspections, making sure that you comply with whatever is needed, whether it's the exist, what's called the existing building code, or if you need to comply with the current building code or the energy code, things like that. So I think that's good because for fire and safety, you want that, especially if they're close together or anything like that, you certainly want your neighbors to be up to code. But he, the building inspector will be interested in that when you make your application for the village.
And do you think that we can ask the C P A to allow us to release other houses or every time we have to come back and...
It would be for every application. Every application stands on its own set of merits.
So if you have others that you know of, then I would say have them put together an application, and then...
Do it safely.
It, it might make it easier unless trips out at night, but...
Now, one other thing, will we get this in writing? I'm here to say, or do I have to?
Which part?
The, what I...
Part of where I go and, you know, will we put it in, have it submitted?
So this board will most likely, can I authorize Natalie, the village engineer, to draft a written referral to the Z B A? When, in her memo, she'll type up what relief that you're seeking. So then that will go to the building inspector, you'll be caught, or whoever's the, on record with the building department will be copied on that. That will require you to fill out a Z B A application and start that process with them.
Now, should we also respond to these, to the comments of you or report?
I would wait until they get, if they get relief, right?
Yeah, I would, I would probably say, at this time, you, you could wait to see what you get relief from, from the... Because if they, if they say, no, you don't get the four eighty-four you're asking for, and you get two hundred or something like that, it may change how your response is, and I wouldn't want you to spend the time or the money to, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah, to pay somebody to do something when it may change. But also for, these meetings are online, so you, I hate to say, you could, you could watch it again to find out what happened, or the meetings, the meetings are post, the meeting minutes, I'm sorry, are posted as well, probably in, approved in September. So they'd be posted, like, the end of September, they would probably be posted as minutes, but the video would be up as soon as, like, next week.
Yeah, I mean, the, the clerks are usually good about getting it up, so usually within forty-eight hours.
And it'll be clear how to get into it.
You can go on the village's website, and there's a little YouTube picture, and you just click that one.
Oh, wait, sorry, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. One is, there is a full basement shown underneath the proposed addition, so that is included in the gross floor area calculations for the purposes of the board and for the Z B A. So you'll want to adjust the plans if that's not your intention to construct the basement. The second thing is, you've re...
I think, remember, I think that it's only downstairs.
Uh, the plans, if you go to, yeah, it has stairs to it and everything.
But is that considered a floor area that I'm giving you?
Yes, it's considered part of your gross floor area calculations for the home. So that would be included. So that's something that you'll want to consider with the Z B A or modifying maybe to your submission, in your submission to the Z B A. And then the second thing is, our memo does not discuss conversion from a seasonal use to a year-round use. If that is your intention, there are other code requirements that you would need to comply with. That's section three-ten-twenty-six of the code. So I would suggest you review those requirements and consider whether or not that is something that you want to proceed with. You know, and again, we haven't indicated anything in our memo about that, but there would be additional comments in that regard.
Is the timeframe for seasonal dwelling?
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is.
No.
So there was a question?
Is the timeframe for seasonal dwelling? Like, you said you don't want to leave till October, it was one...
Yeah, they wanted you to do it, um, like, to November prime.
That's my question, does it include the filing of the timeframe?
The code, I don't believe the code does, but I would just confirm with the building department that that's acceptable for seasonal dwellings.
All right, so I'm gonna offer a motion to refer this application to the Z B A for any and all relief that the applicant may require.
One second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So that's your next step, is get in front of the Z B A and then go from there. Once we hear back from, once you hear back from them, then we can take it up again at this board. If you can, just the digital copies, if you can email them to the, to the building clerk. So we can have them, it'll be easier to read.
Could you also refer it to the, it might make it easier for the applicant if you just refer it to the building department for that determination on seasonal?
On seasonal use?
That way they get an answer maybe quicker.
Sure. All right, so I'll offer a motion for referral to the B, to the building inspector for determination of what seasonal is. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That may get you an answer a little quicker.
You're welcome. I thought I saw Mr. Bershaw walk in.
Yes.
You did.
You did?
You did, I don't know where you went.
Mr. Bershaw? Hi. All right.
Going back to corporate?
Going back to corporate drive.
Okay.
You can put your bag down, you mean, we're not rushing you out, we're not rushing you out the door.
So, um, meeting everybody, Stephen Bershaw is here for the applicant. I have gone through Natalie's memo. Kelly and I had a discussion before tonight's meeting. And essentially what I'm hoping we can do today, since this matter has been before for some time, is make sure that we have a path to get this done and make reasonable way. Hopefully, the application's pending for a while. I think the board is aware, but if not, the property is used by a company, which is a nonprofit organization that provides various important services, particularly for those with development and need financial facilities. To remind the board, this came up because of, unlike others, that's why you seem to do what they think that they want to do and then come for approval. Here, that's not what happened. Here's what happened, is my understanding is, is that there were certain issues that caused the happen, the changes in the way that this building is actually built. My understanding is, is that the prior building inspector was aware of this as early as when the foundation was built. And that periodically thereafter, as the building went up, the building inspector was aware and had said to the contractor, the project manager, the provider, that what would be done is at the end of the process is to be taken care of in a as-built set of plans. Now, whether or not the building inspector had, the prior building inspector had the authority to say that, whether the prior building inspector was acting legally or not, we're gonna let this work out. So when your building inspector came along, the building inspector said, no, 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 you gotta come and get a site plan. So we're here for this mine site plan to simply authorize what the prior building inspector had said was okay. Now, the issue came up as to whether or not this building is in fact too tall. I, when I looked at it, the building inspector, when I looked at it and looked this in prior correspondence back in the day, I explained why I thought the building was not too tall. This requires some determination from the building inspector. I don't know quite how we make that happen. For as far as I'm concerned, I would love if the building inspector said, oh, you know what? You're right, look at the perimeter, and look how it's calculated, it isn't compliant. If it isn't in compliance, in the sense that it does not meet zoning requirement, then the question is, how would we proceed there? And I think Kelly is correct, we are wrong. I don't know if we have any choice at that point but to go to the Z B A on one of two things, either we would argue that the building inspector's decision is wrong in the sense that he has to follow the prior building inspector did because it was an interpretation, and there's this principle of administrative stariness, who is this fancy word, basically says, when administrative official does it, the next administrative official is bound to acquire determinations. Or the alternative to that areas. My hope was we could avoid a lot of that by the building inspector issuing a determinative if she had said he's okay with this, either adhering to what the prior building inspector did or say, no, in fact, it isn't compliant. I don't think the physical order can do anything, somewhere they are. You gotta get a building inspector's determination. They can ask for it, ask for it to be executed, which would be nice. And I think we need to have some collective way of moving forward on that. I was confused by, filled by the, the traffic now because I don't think anything was going on that triggers, you know, anything with the traffic.
Okay, so the, the comments that I had really focused on the signing that's there doesn't meet current standards. So, for example, on the exit driveway, there's a do, there's a do not enter sign. There should also be one-way signs, and there should be a stop bar and a stop sign. And on the entry driveway, there is a single one-way sign, there should be dual one-way signs to conform with current M U T C D. They're very simple. We ask for trip generation just so, so we have a record of what the trip estimates are. We're not looking for any traffic study. The, I don't know, and I just brought up whether or not the E S O's had reviewed the plan relative to circulation of ambulance or anything. Again, if it was already done, we're satisfied. And then the only other comment I have is, and this can be coordinated before occupancy of the building, and it can be coordinated with the village's superintendent of streets. The stop sign at the end of Corporate Drive, before the building's occupied, the stop sign at the end of Corporate Drive and thirty-two should be replaced. And whether the village does it, it's just something that needs to be coordinated as part of, before you occupy the building. That's it, simple.
So signage is, that's not...
Yeah, it's simple stuff, that's all. Nope, we're not looking for anything.
We were hoping for a two-week-long twenty-four, no. Your heart dropped a little bit, didn't it?
I need to share.
Two weeks, I think, maybe the building inspector, the two weeks, that's a... Okay, um, on to the other issues that were raised regarding landscaping. I spoke to Kelly, and Kelly said that there is no way for anything to be done by this board regarding landscaping, that it has to be, if there's a deviation, has to be done by, by variance. So what I was hoping, again, that perhaps we could help in terms of the building inspectors, I don't know why it is that the building inspectors, you know, the front of this building has literally been in front of them. The way I looked at the design of this building was, you know, you have these, this ADA compliant walkways around the property, or when you look at it from the street, or you look at it from outside, what you see is a building, a five-foot landscaped area, should just simply be in front of the table. That's what visually makes sense, as opposed to trying to think of the five feet as being right outside the front wall of the building, or you got a walkway that surrounds the building that's helping, it just doesn't make sense. That's not what landscaping is for, landscaping should be on the ground. Actually, the interpretation from the building inspector, and that would be case, it would not require any barriers. Are you clear?
Yes.
Makes sense?
All right, it, it... It makes perfect sense, but you know, at this point, our hands really are tied. We're going on what the building inspector has said. While we're more than happy to ask for a written interpretation, and we will, I'm sure the board will authorize that tonight. At the end of the day, if that's what he says, that's what he says, we can't...
That's what I told Steve, was that this was something, again, that the board could not waive, but when he explained it, again, you know, it makes sense, but I'm not above the inspector, so could tell me a lot of things that, to me, makes sense, and then they tell me no. So I think that it would be appropriate to ask John for his opinion, and it can be set forth in this manner where it's explained the same way in the reasoning, and John can make his determination, and we'll at least have an answer in that.
Right, so for, we're looking for his determination on how he came up with the building height and whether it's conforming or not, and then the front landscape barrier.
And I guess related to that question is whether he would accept the prior building inspector's interpretations, as in, have to say, he would do it, he would start it from scratch, but will he accept that this is what was done and that the building was built into faith in the lines of what the property department said.
None of that is in writing, though, right? Like, it's not something that...
No, I asked about that, Natalie. Apparently, it's, I don't know if it's still the practice of the building inspector, but it was my understanding as a practice of the building inspector that when they come and they inspect, they don't issue a document that says, okay, we've now done your frame inspection, and this inspection, there's just no violations, and you just keep on going. So at various points in time along the way, the building was built, and if there had been a determination by the prior building inspector that there was a violation, the height was wrong, if all of these things were a problem, the building inspector would be in position and notice a violation in order to adopt. Other than that, it's just something, yeah, you get the green light and you keep on going. And it's not like the prior building inspector wasn't there. The prior building inspector was the regular, you know, the prior...
I think at some point, they got a program that was supposed to help with that, but I don't know when that came into play.
I mean, we can't, unfortunately, we can't, he's no longer here, he doesn't work for the village anymore, and...
So we're dealing with this...
We're, we're, we're trying to pick the pieces up now, and we're, we're, we're gonna work with you. We never have, right, Steve? We've never not worked with you, so...
That, that person, I can't tell that at all. Let me ask this procedural question, and then I don't have nothing more to say. Procedural questions are, is it appropriate for planning board to designate itself as an agency and adopt a, yeah, you guys know what is involved here, the building and all that significance? That's one question. Is it appropriate to make a determination just to tell them or not this application requires a public hearing by this board? And I think that there's no basis for G M L referral. Those would be items that I would ask, and those do you trust me?
You are like, hand this up for me so I can just get a chance to speak, you need to think. So in terms of seeker, this project previously went through the seeker process, and you issued a negative declaration in April of twenty nineteen. Looking at the project and the site modifications that were made, I think it would be appropriate for the board to reaffirm the negative declaration that you previously issued, that that's up to the board. In terms of G M L referral, unfortunately, it is an amended application. It was, I did re-refer this, um, July eighteenth, so, July eighteenth? That might be August 18th. I'm going to have to look it up. I don't remember. It was on an 18th of this month or last month. But it was re-referred, but I don't think that that's going to be a big pull-up for this particular project. And then in terms of the public hearing, that is actually in this board's discretion in accordance with your code. And you find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the terms of any applicable special permit approval or no special permits required. It doesn't represent a substantial change from the approved site plan, then you are permitted to waive the whole.
I think the last thing that I had on my outline was to answer the question, Natalie, you've created a concrete pad. That is putting there in the case in the future, they would like to obtain a permission to put it in the path of generator until the plan can be moved out now. It's just a way to put the concrete in so that in the event that they do decide that we need to have it, then seek permission.
Natalie, anything else?
Just a couple of things. I think obviously the referral to the building inspector is the key here. There were some discrepancies among the landscaping plan and the as-built survey, which should be reconciled in a future plan submission. A revised lighting plan was provided and in some areas along the rear property line, the foot candles exceed your typical 0.1 level that you typically require. They approach up to 0.4 foot candles. So, there are opportunities, I think, for the applicant to maybe adjust the height of the poles or where the fixtures are mounted to reduce those levels to comply. Use a different type of bulb, things like that. So, that's something that you would want to look at. Inspections during this process found that there was existing drainage that's owned by the village on the south end of the property. That needs to be captured under an easement per the recommendation of the street superintendent. So, that should be shown on a future plan submission and those legal documents provided to council for review. You know, and I think the rest of our memo just discusses for the board's purposes what other changes have occurred, but we don't have any other comments on those. Like grading and drainage is resolved for us, but there were modifications. Yep.
Questions for Natalie?
Correction, it was referred on August 18th, sorry. I just looked it up.
How dare you?
I'd rather take them.
Phil, anything else? I do have one question for you, Steve. You said it was going, is it going to be now a school for special needs children?
I don't believe that this is technically a school. I believe that they provide support services of various types. And there are healthcare-type services, student services. They are patient-oriented. I do not believe that this is a school.
I ask because we initially approved this as an office building.
Yeah, this is not an office building either, then.
Right, that was the, this is going to be not a school, but a place where these types of services do.
It was a medical facility?
Does that change the use?
The approval is for.
Standby. Jeopardy theme. I thought we just did it as an office building.
You did it as an office building.
There's medical offices and there's business offices.
Right, what I'm saying, it doesn't that change, it doesn't.
So, I'm actually not really clear what that was, that description. So, maybe they submit a narrative and we can refer that to the building inspector for a determination.
I don't know if you heard Natalie. Maybe write it up and add that to the building inspector. So, there's no buses or kids or, okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you for the clarification, sir. Do you mind just putting it in writing and we'll add it to the... Thank you, Steve. Any other question?
Only with the referral to John. Steve, do you want to submit some of the discussion that you had with the board in writing so that I can kind of attach that to my memo to him? Just I think it kind of helps, you know, describe what your position is.
I have already done that info on Kelly.
Okay. As long as that's okay with the board, I think it makes more sense.
Yeah, I think the more information you can provide, the better it'll be.
Agreed.
I haven't even opened the email. Sorry.
It's all right. Anything else, Steve, Kelly? Okay, all right. So, I'll offer a motion to reaffirm the secret finding from April 3, 2019. Questions? All in favor? All right, public hearing? All right, I'll offer a motion to waive the public hearing. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. All right, I'll authorize drafting of a referral to the building inspector for determination on how building height was established. The front, the question about the front landscape buffer, correct? Those are the two things we're, okay. So, I'll offer that motion. Any questions? All in favor? I'll even do you one better. I'll offer a referral to the ZBA in case you want to seek relief.
I think a referral, if necessary, would be.
Yes, okay. I'll offer a referral to the ZBA for any and all relief that may be necessary.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Well, the building inspector is permitted to make his own decision. The question was, what is John's position? Is John's position going to be the same as the prior inspector? So, John's allowed to make the decision that he believes ought to, but.
I think it's better in a conversation between you and the building inspector, though. That's out of our wheelhouse. Thank you, have a good night. Okay. All mine of orange, review and discuss revised plans and materials for ridge preservation and ARB for a proposed single-family dwelling located at Skyline Drive in Highland Mills, known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Toph, section 208, block 1 lot 312. Wow, was it something I said?
Oh, my gosh, you cleared the room.
Good evening.
It's either you or it was Steve.
Right, I'm not sure who cleared the room here. Yes, it has. Don't worry, Maria's going out to yellow people. Sorry, we won't hold it against you. It's been a long, it's been a long application. We'll throw it right to Natalie.
Yeah, you've been involved since the beginning, I think, Steve, a little bit, right? No, you don't have to, no.
No, no, we're doing pretty good on time tonight. Let's not do that. Go ahead, Natalie.
Sure, so the applicant, since their last submission, shifted the home away from the property line to provide a complying distance between the proposed retaining wall and the property line. That was one of our threshold issues last time. They also provided a turning movement plan as requested by the fire department. You may wish to refer that plan to the fire department just for their records. We reviewed it, didn't have any comments. The access to the property, and this has come up several times, conflicts with the neighboring property's driveway. The applicant has indicated in their correspondence that they agreed to work with the neighboring property owner. We defer to counsel for advice as to whether or not there should be any legal agreement or mechanism, you know, to make sure that that all happens cohesively. The applicant provided drainage calculations confirming the culvert proposed is sufficient for managing the up gradient runoff. There are some minor inconsistencies from the plan to the analysis that need to be resolved. There is an existing swale that crosses this property from the north to the south. The analysis indicates that that has certain dimensions, so we'd like the applicant to either confirm that the swale will be improved to match those modeled dimensions or provide some confirmation that it exists as it was modeled. Our notes indicate a determination on visibility from the view corridor remains. Board should consider whether or not the materials and colors naturally blend with the tree cover and surrounding environment under your ridge preservation code. Tree removal should be limited to that which is necessary for the site. The applicant is proposing supplemental plantings to offset the tree removal. Oh, I'm sorry. They haven't shown supplemental plantings to date. The board should consider whether or not that's appropriate. The ARB form needs to be updated to reflect the proposed gross floor area of the home. And then I think the big thing here now, Steve, where this application stands is that it is subject to the moratorium. And also, this would increase the sewer demand for the property and should be referred to the county as part of that letter that was submitted. I don't remember when. This will be that, this will be the first referral for that.
So, I don't know if Steve just, you probably weren't here. We got a letter from Orange County stating that because of sewer capacity issues in Orange County Sewer District 1, which Woodbury is an outside user of, any new additions would have to go to them for review.
We got that letter as well.
Okay.
So, those are the, that's really the threshold thing. I think the other comments that I went over can be, you know, addressed in future plan submissions. Also, the board should provide some direction on supplemental plantings or, you know, the layout as you've seen it, so.
Questions for Natalie?
The elevations on this property, flat or are they coming up from the street?
It goes up from the street, so the street is lower than the back of the property and it really is on the crux of a ridge.
I'm just concerned about the proposed water line. 231 feet of a one-inch line going uphill is going to have so much head loss in it, there may not be water in the house.
Yeah, I think that's in our comments too, that the applicant will need to work with the water and sewer administrators to confirm that they're going to have enough pressure to get water to the home.
Not through a one-inch pipe, but 231 feet, not going uphill.
Also, where the storage tank is located up there, it's buried. But that's for the, that'll be their next step, you know, as part of the building permit process.
That was a while back during the public hearing. Where we are right now is that the driveway, oh, where did it go?
Oh, sorry, I was, we did receive the letter, yes. Which one do you want?
I was going to show the driveway and the other driveway together.
The actual, up here?
Yeah, down there. So, part of it is that the driveway goes over the other driveway, but that's actually all in the village's right-of-way. So, the applicant has committed to working with the neighbor regarding, there was some concern about, like you're going to be on my driveway, but it's actually all in the village's right-of-way. So, they're committed to work with anyone.
If that part of that poses a challenge, if the right-of-way still exists.
Well, I've come to the conclusion that that is the village's right-of-way and there's been no challenge to that conclusion.
And they would actually have to challenge the village, right, on those rights? Yeah, it would be, I hate to use the, but it'd be more of a civil matter between the property owner and the village. You know, council is telling us that, in her legal opinion, that it is a village right-of-way. So, we have to go based on what our council is telling us, so.
We did a lot of work on that with the highway department, with the Orange, with Orange County and their mapping department. There was a lot of work that, and we went back years because of a letter from one of the neighbors that was originally submitted. It might be the same neighbor, I'm sorry, I don't remember their names. But they submitted a letter in the beginning that was quite detailed. And frankly, anybody who submits a letter that's like that, any letter actually, but put in so much work, it's really worth the time and effort to follow up on. And so, we spent a lot of time working on this project.
Other questions, comments, feedback? We do, I think we, as far as supplemental plantings and overall ARB feel, I think we, at this point, we need to provide the applicant with some direction. I know we did have a couple of discussions prior meetings about the look and the feel of the house and he did provide a couple of other pictures of other, it's like a hodgepodge of houses, but how's the board feel about the overall look, design and the need for any kind of supplemental planting to replace? That's a native lot, right, if I remember correctly?
It is.
Sound developed, too, yeah.
It's subject to.
ECC, right.
ECC. And if the board recalls, this was also one where you previously authorized the drafting of a resolution. So, I provided you with the draft resolution, but these, they are subject to the moratorium. So, the conversations have been ongoing, so obviously any new, it's going to need to be modified for any conditions or things like that that you want to place on it. I did have conversations with the applicant's new attorney, Charlie Buzidlow. They had been going, they were thinking about applying for a waiver from the moratorium and then they decided not to. And then I thought they were going to and then I'm not really sure where that landed. So, I don't know, you know? So, either you're still going to be waiting on the draft resolution and you can keep modifying it with your comments or whatever. But you have plans and you can give them your comments and we know, we'll write them down and change the resolution.
Feedback? Yeah, I mean, we can, we can't take action on it anyway because of the moratorium, so it's not like... And I know, there was a few plan submissions, right, they have to give to us, Natalie?
Yes, there's some modifications, you know, to the drainage study that was provided and, you know, that's actually probably all I have left as far as changes. Unless the board has any direction that they want to provide to the applicant, you know, regarding the plantings and things like that.
No, I think what I'm hearing is the board wants to have the full board here to comment on ARB.
Yes.
Yes. Kelly, we can hold, because we can't take action on it anyway. We can wait for the full board, right? Kelly?
Yeah, you can wait for the full board. You can give the applicant any comments that you have. You can put it on the next agenda, pick it up right away.
I think maybe that's what we'll do is we'll put it on, I'll make sure the full board's here. I'll put it on the next agenda for, just strictly at this point, ARB review. Did we put blasting conditions? I know Natalie, you.